Saturday, June 5th. At 9:15 a.m., I call the annual town meeting to order. Just a couple of business items. Please turn off your cell phones. There's microphones on the field. If you're seeking an answer to a question or wishing to speak, please go to the microphone, wait to be recognized, state your name and address, and when called on, you may ask your question or speak. For tellers, in the event that we need to do a hand count, to my left, from the 50-yard line to my left, the counters will be Mike Sheehan and Chuck Carucci. Thank you both. And to my right, from the 50-yard line, the counters will be Marcy Bailey and Laurie Capazudo, and thank you both as well. It is a warm day. We have had multiple hearings. The Board of Selectmen in particular has had multiple hearings. They had a hearing on the warrant articles. The warrant articles were sent to everybody's home. So to keep the meeting moving along, we're not going to get into long presentations or descriptions with each warrant article, but we are here to answer questions and resolve issues, so please bring them up if necessary. But I think for all of us, it might be nice if we can get home before we all melt. Speaking of melting, if you are feeling the heat too much, there is a cooling tent over here on the corner of the field. There's a fan, ice, and it's staffed by the fire department. If for some reason you are in your chair and you're feeling a little bit from the heat, raise your hand and someone will help you get over to the cooling station. So we don't want anybody to hit the field. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to admit. This is Manu Pelli.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Mary Ann Mackey, Buddy Miller, Scott Burke, Joseph Parisi, Debbie Carbone, Paula Berry, Jerry Noel, Danielle McKnight, Patrick Daly, Michael Connolly, Sharon Kelleher, Mark Clark, Mark Hamel, Michael Murphy, Sue Magna, Darren Klein, Carol DeCrow, Maureen Doherty, Sharon Kelleher, Robert Collins, Attorney Joe Mann, Attorney O. Bradley Latham, Attorney Christopher M. Latham, Dee Bruce Wheeler, Peter Augren, Lawrence Reeves, Craig Seymour, Harold Miller, and Norah Kim.
On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mrs. Manu Pelli, I will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the articles by number, and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
We have the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Mrs. Manu Pelli, Article 1.
Pledge. Pledge. Pledge of Allegiance. If, Mr. Moderator, if we might do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
If you would, if you can, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget voted under Article 14 of the June 29, 2020 annual town meeting as follows. Increase Line 101 water department expenses by $147,295 to be funded from water revenue. Increase Line 105 Hillview Country Club expenses by $160,000 to be funded from Hillview revenues, as specified in Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 2, Mrs. Manu Pelli.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $47,155 to fund a deficit in the fiscal year 2021 snow and ice budget, as specified in Article 2 as printed in the
We have the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,477,784 to be added to the capital improvement stabilization fund, as specified in Article 3 as printed
I apologize. We have the motion. Seeing any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from fiscal year 2021 water department retained earnings, the sum of $14,665, to be added to the water infrastructure stabilization fund, as specified in Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Before we go to Article 5, normally I would call for recommendations from the board. All the board's recommendations so far have been printed in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
The packages for the record.
Yep.
Article 1, we voted this morning to recommend.
It was in the warrant as unanimous.
And Finance Committee also recommends.
So for Article 1, the Board of Selectmen recommends?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
For the Finance Committee? Finance Committee recommends?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 to be added to the stabilization fund, as specified in Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
I guess I went a little too fast. We're going to go with recommendations from now on. Okay. So we have the motion, recommendation for the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Manu Pelli.
The Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends passing over.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passing over.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 7 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
The Select Board recommends passing over.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passing over.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 8, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move to pass over Article 8 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Motion to recommend passing over, as does the Finance Committee.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 9, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Select Board to choose all necessary town officers not elected by ballot and to determine what instructions shall be given.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Move to recommend, as does the Finance Committee.
Further discussion?
No action required by the Finance Committee.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 10.
I move to accept the printed town report for calendar year 2020 as reported as the
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Move to recommend.
Finance Committee? Any town reports?
No town reports, given the heat.
Seeing none, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 11, Mr. O'Leary.
I move to authorize the Director of Public Works to accept easements on behalf of the town, as specified in Article 11, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Move to recommend.
Finance Committee?
Move to recommend.
They recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements, as specified in Article 12, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends, as does the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 13, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate such sum as may be allotted from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Chapter 90 apportionment or other state roadway reimbursement programs for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, or maintaining roadways within the town of North Reading, as specified in Article 13, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Select Board and Finance Committee both recommend maintaining our roadways.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 14, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize payment of bills of a prior fiscal year from the fiscal year 2021 operating budget voted under Article 14 of the June 29, 2020 annual town meeting as follows. Office equipment repairs and maintenance in the amount of $216.43 to be paid from Line 11 Town Administrator Expenses. Volunteer recognition, an amount of $210 to be paid from Line 11 Town Administrator's Expenses. Custodial services in the amount of $277.71 to be paid from Line 11 Town Administrator Expenses. Code enforcement certification in the amount of $187.24 to be paid from Line 46 Code Enforcement Expenses. Legal subscriptions in the amount of $245.42 to be paid from Line 37 Police Department Expenses, as specified in Article 14, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Select Board and Finance Committee both recommend.
This requires, as it's a prior year bill, it requires a four-fifth vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Discuss? Opposed? Article 15. Mr. Walner.
Home rule petition, establish the Cell Tower Receipts Reserve Fund. I move that the town authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for a special act providing for a special account for receipts received regarding leases of space on town water towers and the DPW facility located at 166 Chestnut Street held by cell tower companies, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. An act creating a cell tower receipts fund for the town of North Reading, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding Section 53 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other general or special law to the contrary, the Select Board in the town of North Reading may establish a special account into which the revenue generated by the town may be placed into without further appropriation from leases to cell tower companies of space, one on tower water towers, on town water towers, and two at the DPW facility located at 166 Chestnut Street, North Reading. Section 2, the special account shall be maintained by the Treasurer of the town of North Reading in a banking institution doing business in the Commonwealth, and expenditures from the special account shall be made subject to appropriation by a majority vote at the town meeting. The Treasurer of the town of North Reading may invest monies in the special account, and the income and interest accruing shall endure to the benefit of the special account. In the event that the town is holding unappropriated funds received as lease payments subject to this act that were received before the effective date of this act, the Treasurer may deposit and manage said funds into the special account consistent with the terms of this act. Section 3, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends. Finance Committee also recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 16.
FY 2022 operating budget. I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the column headed Select Board Recommended in lines 1 through 112, excluding Line 99, which is debt service, including the transfer of other funds totaling $72,280...I'm sorry. $72,286,977, all as set forth in the budget details dated June 5, 2021, as printed in the warrant, and further that the lines for department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation for each department except for Line 98, which shall be for purposes of paying assessments to Northeastern Metropolitan Regional Vocational
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Walner.
Recommends. Finance Committee recommends as well.
And Mr. Buckley for the School Department? The School Department also recommends. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. There is a second motion under Article 16 as it relates to debt service, which requires a two-thirds vote, so it is separated from the first motion. Mr. Walner, the second motion for Article 16.
I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in the column headed Select Board Recommended Line 99, debt service, in the amount of $7,768,625, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forth in the budget detail dated June 5, 2021, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the Select Board?
Recommends.
For the Finance Committee?
Recommends.
For the School Committee, Mr. Buckley?
Recommends.
Recommends. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 17, Mr. Walner.
Fund Retirement Obligations. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of funding FY 2022 retirement obligations for town employees, as specified in Article 17, as printed in
For the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Walner.
Recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommends.
School Committee, Mr. Buckley?
Yes, recommends.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 18, Mr. Walner.
Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of funding another post-employment benefits liability trust fund, as specified in Article 18, as printed
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Recommends.
Finance Committee? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 19.
Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund for unanticipated unbudgeted costs for special education, out-of-district tuition, or transportation. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to be added to the School District Reserve Fund, as specified in Article 19, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Walner.
Recommends.
For the Finance Committee?
Recommends. And School Committee?
And School Committee, Mr. Buckley?
They recommend.
Recommends. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 20, Mr. Walner.
Rescind Authorization to Borrow. I move to pass over Article 20, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article 21, Ms. Gonzalez.
Article 21, I move to appropriate amounts to purchase items of a capital nature in the amounts and for the purposes as specified in Article 21, as printed in the warrant, including equipping vehicles and for all items, all incidental and related costs, and to correct the department for Tool Cap 5600 to Reed School. And furthermore, in all instances where authorized to borrow is listed as the source of funds, said borrowing will be pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority. And to authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow said specified sums and issue bonds and notes therefore. And further that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount.
Select Board recommends. Finance recommends.
School Department, Mr. Buckley? Any quick discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. It wasn't two-thirds vote, but that's irrelevant. Article 22.
Article 22, appropriate money to participating funding arrangement fund. I move to pass over Article 22, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board and Finance recommend.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 23.
Article 23, fund town building repairs. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for repairs and improvements to municipal buildings, including all incidental and related costs, as specified in Article 23, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board and Finance recommend.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 24.
Article 24, appropriate money for special counsel legal expenses. I move to pass over Article 24, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board and Finance Committee recommend.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article 25.
Article 25, appropriate...
Article twenty-five, appropriate money for legal expenses, twenty Elm Street litigation. I move to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to fund expenses concerning the twenty Elm Street Chapter forty-B comprehensive permit application and litigation with regard thereto, including remand to the ZBA and any other legal costs, consultants, engineers, and all costs related thereto as specified in Article twenty-five, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board and Finance Committee.
Both recommend.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-six.
Article twenty-six, amend Code of North Reading Chapter sixty-six Finance Add School Rental Revolving Fund. I move to amend General Bylaw Chapter sixty-six Finance Article One Revolving Funds sixty-six dash one, establishment of revolving accounts by adding a new revolving account entitled School Rental Revolving Fund, as specified in Article twenty-six, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Recommendation to recommend and Finance recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Mr. Buckley for the School Committee. School Committee recommends. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-seven.
Article twenty-seven, establish dollar amount for School Rental Revolving Fund. I move to set the limit for expenditures of the School Rental Revolving Fund at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, as specified in Article twenty-seven, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Recommends.
Finance Committee.
Recommends.
Mr. Buckley for the School Committee.
Recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-eight, Mr. Studo.
Article twenty-eight, amend dollar amounts for various revolving funds. I move to pass over Article twenty-eight, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-nine. Mr. Hayden. For the Community Planning Commission.
Article twenty-nine, I move to amend the Code of North Reading zoning bylaws by adding a new section, two-hundred dash forty-six point one, small wireless facilities, as specified in Article twenty-nine, as printed in warrant.
Recommendation from the Select Board, Mr. Studo. Select Board recommends. For the Finance Committee. Finance Committee recommends.
Q to play, Commission recommends.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Knight.
Thank you. Just briefly, because the CPC does need to give a report on this one to Town Meeting. The proposed new zoning bylaw would create a new review process to align with the FCC regulations that are specific to small wireless installations. This new bylaw would create a separate review procedure for small wireless facilities only. It's been simplified to meet FCC regulations, and the CPC had their public hearing on this zoning amendment on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and has voted to recommend this article to Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Unanimous. Article thirty, Mr. Hayden.
I move to amend the Code of North Reading zoning bylaws by adding a new Article twenty-seven, senior housing overlay district, as specified in Article thirty, as printed in the warrant. The following change, delete paragraph K in two-hundred dash one sixty-nine, as printed in the warrant, and substitute the following in its place. K, local preference. As part of the special permitting process, the applicant shall submit a local preference plan for review by the Community Planning Commission with input from the Select Board. The plan may provide that before new market rate units, meaning non-affordable housing units, are sold to the general public, the following persons will be allowed an opportunity to contract with a developer to purchase a market rate unit, current and former residents of the town, employees of the town, and a parent, child, or sibling of a residence of the town. A local preference plan shall provide for the advanced public, local public notice at the developer's expense of the local preference plan and the availability of units. To the extent allowed by law, such plan may be made a condition of a special permit issued pursuant to this article and shall be implemented accordingly.
Ms. Knight, does the CPC have a report? On this? Thank you.
The proposed addition of a zoning overlay for one forty-six to one fifty Park Street is a project that was initially brought to the CPC by owner Bruce Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler has developed a project concept for these three properties, which would require the overlay since multifamily housing is not currently allowed in the local business zoning district. The next steps if Town Meeting does vote to create the overlay district, if the vote is successful, would be for the applicant to submit the project to the CPC for site plan review and a special permit, and to the other boards and commissions for the appropriate permitting. The CPC has voted to recommend the rezoning proposal to Town Meeting. The motion includes the following alterations made after discussion with the Select Board and review by Town Council. It removes the requirements for elevators since internal building features may not be regulated by zoning. Second, it adds to the special permit review process a local preference marketing plan that would prioritize, to the extent permitted by law, selling the units to North Reading residents. The sale of the affordable units will also prioritize North Reading residents to the degree allowed, but this is regulated separately by state housing regulations. The CPC has voted to support the amendments included in the motion and held their public hearing on this matter on April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you. The applicant has let me know he doesn't need to give a presentation, but is available to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. So we have the report of the CPC. Can I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen? Select Board recommends. For the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee recommends. For the Community Planning Commission, Mr. Hayden.
Community Planning Commission recommends.
Is there any further discussion? Please go to the microphone. Pat? Yep.
Pat Fillmore, twenty-four Fieldcrest Terrace. I have a couple of questions. First of all, has anybody noticed the seven o'clock traffic, seven AM traffic over there on Park Street and Haverhill Street? You're going to add fifty units? That's first concern. Second concern is, I'm seeing senior housing overlay. This isn't just going to the seniors. There's fifty units, from what I read in the paper, that are going to be affordable housing. This town needs senior housing, not fifty-five and older, where if they're going to downsize, they're going to be paying four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. To me, I think we have a lot of questions that have to be answered. Thank you.
Ms. Knight.
The proposal would require that one person on the deed for each unit be fifty-five or older, and so it would be senior housing for the entire project, and eight of those units would be affordable to eighty percent area market, area median income. So it is, it's a moderate level of affordability. It's not an extreme level of affordability. So it is a mix of market rate and affordable units, and all are intended to be senior units.
Can I?
Pat, go ahead.
So what you're saying, it's going to be the same as the housing on Main Street, Northridge, or Martin's Landing? That's what you're saying?
Ms. Knight.
So if I'm going to downsize, I'm not going to be able to afford one of those units. And again, we need senior housing. Have you looked at those up there yet?
Ms. Knight.
I know that the CPC does agree that the town does need more senior housing and more affordable housing. I believe that we need, according to our housing production plan and the studies that we've done, we do need a variety of levels of affordability for that senior housing. This addresses one of the demographics that needs housing, but you're right that it does not address the very most, the very lowest income, you know, home buyers or renters. That is true. This project is intended to address a more moderate level of affordability for seniors.
But again, senior housing, that's what we need. People that have supported this town for sixty, seventy, eighty years are now living up in those dumps up there. I mean, my grandfather lived up in those things, and some of those things haven't been touched in, I couldn't tell you how long. You know, we need senior housing, not affordable housing for, I mean, my kids are fifty, almost fifty-five. So, you know, we need housing for the seniors, not fifty-five and older, because we have one, two, three sets, I think, in town for fifty-five, moderate income.
Sir. Good morning. Boa Green, fourteen Hemlock Road. I have a question if the School Committee has taken a position on the proposal specifically. I see the very strong possibility that there'll be any number of children joining the residencies and inherently impacting the school in terms of the student population. Thank you.
Mr. Yul. Mr. Yul. Mr. Yul, before you go. Mr. Buckley, would you like to respond?
The School Committee has not officially voted on this yet. We've, I followed along a little bit, and we know that one member at least has to be fifty-five. So from the discussions and the, that I've heard from the owner and the intent of this, we don't believe there'll be a huge impact on the schools. We don't believe that most of the owners in there would have children that would be going to the schools, but at the end of the day, there might be a couple, but we haven't taken an official vote on this. We've, you know, deferred to the, to the other people that have been vetting this, you know, this project. And at the end of the day, my personal opinion is, it also is a private owner who owns three parcels that's trying to provide some, some units that the town believes are useful. And so personally, I'm in support of the, of the project.
Mr. Yul.
Jet, excuse me, Jet Fuel, four twenty-seven Park Street. Off of what Pat Fillmore was saying, we already have three sets of affordable housing for fifty-five and over. We already, there is a concern that it only has to be one person that's fifty-five and over that could end up with more children living in this residence, so it becomes less of a fifty-five and over group, it becomes more of a mix. So those are concerns that I have, but the biggest concern, I think, that Pat Fillmore is expressing is that there's nothing for seniors. And once again, seniors are being pushed to the side and not being given an opportunity to stay in the town of North Reading, at least in a decent place to live, other than this catastrophe over here on PBD Court. So I appreciate the, the offer and the recommendation of, of the builder, Mr. Wheeler, but if he could come up with a plan for seniors, that would be fantastic, and I think we could all be on board for that. So that's my perspective. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Minos Kaveldez, twenty-eighth Lynn Street. My concern is someone who has brought her senior parents and disabled brother who is over fifty-five, when we came in, is I assure that they can not have to be placed again. So when I see homes like this, my concern is, how does the senior move here and then I'll have to move again? You're talking about two floors. You know, when a senior moves, you want to try and keep their independence as long as you can. Make sure my parents, whoever raised ranch, everything is fluid from room to room. They can exit with those stairs, and that's in the design process, but when you have homes like this, this isn't really, this is a youthful home. Not that our seniors aren't young at heart, but you want them to be able to stay independent in their homes and, you know, yes, fifty-five plus, that's fine, but this young lady mentioned, you now move, you start having difficulties, just whether health-wise, disability, age. Now they're in their homes, and they've only been there a few years, and to get up and down. Senior home really has to also be conducive to their independence and how they can get around those homes if you're looking to help the seniors. So even if we're talking seniors, it's really not senior homes. So I don't, maybe if they could somehow be, you know, designed differently, where they could have, you know, we do have a lot of ranches style at home, and I know it doesn't have to be ranch style, but, you know, where you don't have all these multi-floor homes, I think that would also be better suited, and that would be something absolutely, I think, I'd be behind. It would really help out so that the seniors who have grown, born, were raised here, could stay here. Thank you.
Mrs. Bailey.
Good morning. Marcy Bailey, fourteen Niblick Way. I just wanted to point out, with all due respect to the previous speakers and their concerns about affordable senior housing in town, which I share, voting no on this article does not automatically obligate the private developer or anyone else who might purchase that property or look at another property in town to develop the kind of senior housing the speakers and many of us would like to see in town. many of us would like to see in town and ask for. So if we vote no on this article, it doesn't necessarily bring what you want here. I think that a reputable developer has made a proposal that's innovative, that provides housing for fifty-five plus, eight units of which are affordable under forty B law, to bring it to the center of town where residents who live there can walk to the library, hopefully safely using the crosswalks, can walk to the senior center, can go to Ryers for a cup of coffee. So I just want the members of town meeting not to mix apples and oranges and think just because you vote no on this article that we're going to get some truly low-income senior housing. I hope that the Select Board, the Community Planning Commission, has heard the wishes of the people who spoke here today, and I think that they, they understand them. And it's a big challenge, but something that they will work on, but voting no isn't going to change this to the kind of project that we're hopefully envisioning to keep our, our seniors here. Thank you.
Mrs. Preney?
Can you hear me? I just want to remind people who are talking about PBD Court that that building, those buildings are controlled by the state, but there are people living in those homes. So to call it disgusting, deplorable, it's unfair to the people who live there. Those are their homes. I wish you'd show more respect for the people who are living there than calling their homes disgusting. Thank you.
Mrs. Preney is the Director of Eldor Faez of the town of North Reading. And she is also a board member of the Housing Authority, which has oversight over, over PBD Court. So thank her for her service. Ma'am?
Irene Yul, four twenty-seven Park Street. There are clearly pros and cons. It would be nice to see this development. I'm just having a hard time to reconcile the phrase senior housing and looking at creating an overlay on the zoning that removes the requirement for elevators. I, I find it hard to call that senior housing. I think if it were really senior housing, we would have things that would help seniors, like elevators.
Ms. Knight?
Thank you. If I could just respond to the elevators, the CPC absolutely agrees, and I believe the developer also agrees, that this project should have elevators. The difficulty is that elevators are an interior element of building design that cannot be regulated by zoning. So if we were to leave it in, in all likelihood, the Attorney General's Office would strike that provision. Now, having an elevator building and a building that has good, you know, universal design with great accessibility components to it is absolutely something that the applicant and the CPC would plan to work together on in the special permitting process. It just cannot be done as, as part of the zoning because zoning cannot regulate interiors of buildings. And I guess if I could just respond to some of the other concerns, I absolutely hear that concern that the town is in dire need of more affordable housing for seniors and more affordable housing to serve the income levels of seniors who are very low-income and who would not necessarily benefit from a project such as this. But I do want to point out that the need for affordable housing in North Reading is not just limited to our most senior population. We have a need for affordable housing at every level of the population, including those at the fifty-five and over level, which can include the most senior, and we need family housing too. This is an example of one project that seeks to serve one segment of our town, one, one demographic, or a couple of demographics, but it doesn't seek to completely solve the problem of the need for very low-income senior housing, which the CPC absolutely recognizes should be a high priority and intends to continue to work to try to find solutions for. And I appreciate that being brought to our attention. This particular project, as has been pointed out, is initiated by a private developer who is not obligated to, you know, necessarily address any of the levels of affordability necessarily, but has, but has chosen to do so, and the CPC is in, in strong support of that. I, I did want to see if it would be okay with the moderator. I didn't know if the applicant wanted to say a few words, or if his attorney wanted to have an opportunity.
I, I did speak with Mr. Latham, who was representing the applicant, and I did tell Mr. Latham he could address the body briefly. Mr. Latham?
Mr. Moderator, citizens of the town of North Reading, I'd like to respond to a couple of points if I could. The state law defines someone as senior when they're over fifty-five. That is the state standard. This project, if allowed, will create eight affordable units that do not currently exist. If, in fact, it does not pass town meeting, it would be eight less units that could have been available for the town's use. There clearly is a need for people on all income levels to have senior housing that's appropriate for senior housing. The, as was stated earlier, this project originally had an elevator as one of the components and requirements. Town council said that could not be in there, but I can assure you that this is going to have an elevator, and there'd be no stairs that have to be negotiated by any occupant of the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Latham. Sir, and then I'll go to you on my left. Sir?
Mike Gontier, fifteen Hickory Lane. So maybe this was shared at a prior meeting, but if somebody could share with this body what any infrastructure costs are related to this project, and who is going to be responsible for paying that? Too often, I think, with these projects, put stress on the town infrastructure, and we, the taxpayers, end up making that additional investment to improve the town, to improve those infrastructures. So I'd really like to see something here that creates a contribution to address those infrastructure situations. And additionally, perhaps future development can contribute to a fund to address senior housing issues. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Marty Johnson, nine Oscar's Way. Previous speakers addressed the fact that we would not get eight affordable housing units. I just want to be extremely explicitly clear. Without this proposed amendment to the zoning laws, we are left, I believe, with just three individual lots for three individual homes. Maybe someone could just explain explicitly where we would be without this zoning penalty.
Okay. Ms. McKnight?
In the absence of passing this overlay district, housing would still be allowed in the local business district. I believe you're right, it would be one single-family per, per lot. Multifamily is not a use that's currently allowed in local business. A local business allows for a variety of commercial uses by, both by right and by special permit, but we would not see a housing development at, at that scale. And I guess if I could just respond to the question about infrastructure, that is something that we talk about once the planning commission is undergoing the site plan review and special permit process, and we look at the various utility connections and water service and septic. That is something that happens after the zoning, but I can say that this is in a location that would not require the extension of a water main. It would have its own private septic system, and in terms of other types of utility connections, this is a location that is in clearly, you know, already developed area that does not, would not require extensions of, of major town infrastructure. I don't know if that serves to address the question, but these are the kinds of things that we look at once the project is in the site plan review process.
Just, I've, I've been to some of these meetings, and I just want to point out, the proposal that's being presented today is not the initial proposal. We have asked, and we've been frustrated with owners in town who have not come to the town to work with the town on their developments in the past, and I just want to point out that the owners here have been to select board meetings, finance committee meetings, and CPC meetings. I believe the original proposal just said that they would have affordable housing somewhere, and the boards pushed back and said, no, it needs to be here. Their next proposal was there'd be five affordable units, and they pushed back and said, no, there needs to be more than that. And so I just want to point out that these owners have done what we've asked owners in town to do. They've worked with the various boards here, there's been multiple meetings that they've come to, and the proposal that you're seeing today is not the initial proposal. Many changes have been made based on some of the same concerns that are being raised here today, and I just think that we should approve the plan because the owner has gone through the right methods here, they've worked with the town, they've heard the concerns, and they've made revisions to the plan. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, one of the things that hasn't been spoken about yet is, and this is infrastructure-related, that's a little bit of a difficult corner to see around. And part of this proposal is, however, to move the Jared McLean house, to actually put a new foundation in and twist it some so that, so that there will be better visibility going around that corner. So all these things have been looked at, as Mr. Buckley said, this has been, we've gone through a ways with this, and the plan you're looking at now is one that was developed with a lot of input. Thank you.
Mr. Waller?
Mr. Buckley said a third of what I was going to say, so I will just add on to what Mr. Wheeler and his team has done. It's a very attractive spot. It would be a very attractive addition to our town. I'd like to point out his seniors' walkability is a big deal, and a library being next to their home is a really, really big deal. So from a senior point of view, this is a very attractive location for us to do something to get it close to our historical downtown. I will also comment that on the cash flow issue, is this a negative or a positive cash flow? Anytime you don't have kids in the house, it's a positive cash flow. So if you have kids going to school, basically the rest of the town is helping to fund that in a major way. So this community, which is going to be fifty-five plus, it's going to be a positive cash flow, and I believe that the numbers we saw indicated that in a substantial manner, very similar to what we're going to be getting out of Martin's Landing, which was three point five million of new revenue, and about a million of that will go to general services. The rest goes to support the schools. So cash flow is just not an issue in my mind if you don't have kids living in the house. The third thing I'll say is that some of you may know me, I've been very active in advocating for seniors in our town. I recognize that the three most important things that people want is to live in their house as long as they can, to live in their community as long as they can, and to lead life of purpose. And in my ten, twelve years of working with Mary, doing surveys, talking to town members, going through all the studies we're doing right now, which includes the AARP age-friendly study that UMass Gerontology is putting together, we are recognizing this need and understand it, and there's been practical suggestions made that we can make to make our town more senior-friendly. So what you heard from our town planner was, this is one project of, of many. I agree with that. I've been following the CPC studies, whether it be housing, affordability, streetscapes, walkability at downtown. The need, I believe, is a hundred, at least a hundred and fifty affordable units, and some of that will be not affordable units, a mix of affordable and non-affordable. But it's also includes bringing the whole package together. So I think the board, I think I'm speaking for the board when I say we truly understand the senior needs. I think the CPC truly understands it. I think there's more to come. Some of you probably participated in that survey, and those results are going to come out in a few months. I've already seen them. It indicates more of the same, but the, our work is not done. This is just one project in many that needs to happen and to make our town a living space for the people who live here, who we honor, and that's where local preference came from. We want to give you the opportunity to, to participate in some of these projects and continue to live in your town, because living in our town and staying with our town throughout your entire life is actually very important as a community build experience. Thank you.
Ma'am? Are you? Yeah?
Hi, Andrew Spano, three Hayward Farms Lane, and I have moved to question.
I have a move to the question. All those in favor of moving to the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have the motion, we'll take a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm declaring a two-thirds majority, which I can do under the current bylaws of the town. Article thirty-one. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Caviallo, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of North Reading zoning bylaws, zoning map, by changing the zoning designation of parcels thirteen, fourteen, fifteen on the assessors' map eighteen from resident A to industrial as specified in Article thirty-one as printed in the warrant.
If we could have the report from the CPC, please. Ms. McKnight?
Thank you. This article would rezone map eighteen, parcels thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen from residence A to industrial office. The CPC held a public hearing on this proposed amendment on April sixth, 2021. In a subsequent meeting on May eighteenth, 2021, the CPC voted to recommend this article to town meeting by a vote of three in favor, one against, and one absent. Thank you.
May I have the recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Studo? Select Board recommends for the Finance Committee? For the CPC, Mr. Hayden?
The CPC recommends three, one, and one was absent.
Any further discussion?
Finance Committee voted four, three in favor.
Finance Committee voted four, three in favor. Thank you, Ms. Fillmore. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? This did require a two-thirds vote? Irrelevant? Article thirty-two, Mr. Hayden?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the code of North Reading zoning bylaws, sections two hundred dash thirty as specified in Article thirty-two as printed in the warrant.
The recommendation from the Select Board, Mr. Studo? Okay. Ms. McKnight, do you report from the CPC?
This article would only be necessary with the passage of Article thirty-one since all it does is update the latest revision date of the town meeting, of the town zoning map to reflect the changes proposed in Article thirty-one. The CPC held a public hearing on this article on April sixth and voted to recommend the article to town meeting.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation, or no?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends for the CPC, Mr. Hayden?
CPC recommends four to zero, one was absent.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mrs. Maniopelli, I will entertain one last and final motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting, scene eighty-eight.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you all very much for attending. Have a great day and enjoy the rest of the weekend.